Okay, good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call to order our May 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting tonight for the PM session. And the first thing we have on the agenda always for our PM session is a citizen forum, where anyone can come and speak on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public forum for anyone that would like to come and speak. And we have one that's signed up tonight, and it's Gregory Smith.
My name is Gregory Smith, I'm in Stevensburg District. I had the opportunity this afternoon to go to the Virginia Department of Highway Public Hearing, and the reason I went was to try to find out about the Stevensburg Road, and I didn't know about it until I got talking to somebody, and then I made my presentation. They came to talk to me after the meeting. We've had two community meetings in Stevensburg, and if anything been missing, the road's been taken off of, the progress of being made wider, I haven't heard it. Most everybody in Stevensburg thinks that that road is going to be done down there now on the county of Eastonview School. And the road I'm talking about is 663, the road goes from Stevensburg to Burnley. And you know with Green Corner, you turn a left and go to Eastonview School? Well, I live pretty close to Linus Park, and there's a lot of school buses from the eastern end of the county that go down that road for activity events at the high school. And most time it's four or five cars behind those buses that's coming in to the high school for the sports program. And as you know, that road is not very wide, and the state went by here about, I don't know, six months ago, and black topped the road in different places about thousands feet maybe. Well, they put it down so thin, it's breaking off worse, and you gotta watch the road when you get over, if you meet a truck, or pickup come down with its eight-foot trailer behind it, you better get over to the side. And my point tonight is, I understand that this has got to be put back on the agenda in order to get it back in the process. I've been down there on the farm we have, probably forty-some years, and the state came to me about three years after down there, and wanted we donate the land to make the road wider. Well, that's as far as us been. And now since they put the full-lane highway through Stevensburg completed, we have, I'll say there's a third more vehicles on that road than it used to be. And I know Carco Mill Road is right down below us, and each one of them has got their own benefits. So I just was speaking in half, whatever the board needs to do to try to put their topic back on the agenda, that we can get it back in, maybe we're gonna have to wait another six years again to get it on. So that's my presentation, thank you all very much.
We've been here before, as you well know, and this is regarding two properties, one at 1557, the last number is ripped off on Norman Road, and another one at 10606 Mountain Run Lake Road. Both of these areas are maintaining businesses. Now, we just talked to our representative, who said, "Well, one of them with the landscaping, which by the way has something like four or five large pieces of equipment, ten to twelve cars sitting there, is considered to be agricultural." That's kind of far-fetched. It is also sitting on a piece of property that is part of a developed community. This is not where it's just one house here, another house there. Now, I would like to know what really is considered to be agricultural? If that's the case, I could buy a piece of land there, and I can start raising chickens, and maybe sell flowers, it's all agricultural? And are you telling me that that is legally allowed? Now, I think that's kind of far-fetched, and the one that's on Mountain Lake Run Road, according to our representative, says that that's only just private. Well, he's got boats there, cars there, he's got a huge garage set up with four doors, we've seen them open with all the equipment that's in there. And if that's personal, that's one heck of a hobby. It's a commercial operation. Now, in both cases, Norman Road and Mountain Lake Road are not commercial. We have checked with zoning, it is not commercial. Now, if there are special reasons why these are allowed, we would like to know, because we've been inquiring for two years now, to find out, why is it that they exist there, and we get no answer at all? We're investigating. How long can you investigate? I would suggest that you, as our representatives, see to it that we get a written reply that shows us how it is considered to be legal businesses on Norman Road and on Mountain Run Lake Road. I am tired of hearing that we're going to be investigating it, we're going to find out, we get no definitive answer at all. The closest I've come to anything is our brief conversation that we had just before. So, I don't know if the whole board gets involved with this, or just our representative, but I think we deserve a written reply showing the legality of these two operations on Norman Road and Mountain Run Lake Road. I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come and speak tonight?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Francis Updike from the Cedar Mountain District, fresh off the softball field where it's nice and chilly out there, I feel more like football. I'm not going to take up a lot of time tonight, I wanted to come and thank you for your attentive activities, that you all have paid attention and responded to the dire situation out at Pearl Sample and A.G. Richardson. Every one of you has played a role, and I appreciate it greatly. It's amazing what a community can do, and accomplish, when you work together as opposed to pulling in the wrong direction. I think we all share the same feeling about what's out there, the safety of the children comes first. I would have had my grandchildren with me tonight, but she's playing softball, I had to leave early, she's still playing. But anyway, she'll be eight years old on May 19th, so it's very special to me. Now, there's a person here that doesn't know I'm going to do what I'm going to do. We have the Assistant Principal of A.G. Richardson, Mrs. Hoye, here. Don't mean to embarrass you, but I tell you, I've seen the faculty, staff, especially this lady out there directing traffic, pouring down rain last week. She's always jovial, she's always waving, and they do an amazing job along with the Sheriff's Department, getting the cars and children in and out of there in the morning and the afternoon. But, so, special thanks to you for all that you do, and your faculty and staff, and we're going to work on it from this end. I understand things are moving along nicely, and if we can give me the key to a bulldozer, I'm ready to go tomorrow morning. I did that some of times when in between courses at Virginia Tech, I loved it. It's such a feeling of power to take a bulldozer, and anyway, so be it, I won't run short of my time. But a special thanks too, for every one of you, but I've got to single out Paul and Sam for what they've kept me informed, and every question I have, they've been delightful in answering. Thank all of you, and we're looking forward to getting this accomplished. Thank you all very much.
Anyone else that would like to come and speak tonight? Okay, go ahead and close the citizen forum, and move on to the agenda. We have an agenda before us tonight. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda?
All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First up, the board will hold a public hearing to consider amending and extending the date for which the 2023 BoE shall hear and dispose of applications for relief. I'll go ahead and turn this over to our county administrator, John Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I would describe this as more housekeeping than anything else, but the board did previously approve an uncodified ordinance which established the dates for receipt of applications and the hearing of biennial assessment changes before the 2023 Board of Equalization. Staff is requesting that that ordinance that was previously adopted be amended, and the amendment would simply extend the date for which the 2023 Board of Equalization has to dispose of all its business, and that extension would be from the current July 22nd, 2023, to August 4th, 2023. And this is subject to a public hearing.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John, comments, before we open the public hearing? Okay, this issue requires a public hearing for anyone that would like to come and speak. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. For anyone that would like to come and speak. Okay, seeing none, going to close the public hearing, and open it up for discussion. Or a motion.
Move for approval to extend the date as recommended by staff and council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, planning commission business. The board will consider revision to Appendix A. Go ahead and turn this over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Sam to address the item, but this is a county-initiated zoning ordinance amendment for consideration by the board, and also subject to public hearing once Sam's finished.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, John. And I would kick it to Neil, but we're just going to keep kicking the can down the road, so I'll just start. The board, through the Rules Committee, recently entertained the idea of amending the current height restrictions for our LI Light Industrial zoning district. The board referred that to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing last month, as property advertised, did review and consider the matter, and then did a vote approval to forward a recommendation to amend the height to 75 feet. Those dates were the 12th of April, it was a five-to-three vote that the proposed zoning text amendment be approved. There have been recently a couple, actually several requests now by some industrial users and economic development interests to have the county explore amending, increasing the height of our light industrial zoning district. The current height limit is 45 feet today, has been that way for some time. Our heavy industrial, which we do have some properties in the county that are zoned heavy industrial, has enjoyed a 75-foot height limit for some time as well. So this proposal for a light industrial would match our current heavy industrial height limit of 75 feet. There are some exceptions for certain types of structures that are allowed up to an additional 15 feet beyond that height limit, and that's within any district, including the light industrial that we're looking at tonight. Those have special restrictions, and that language in Article 9-2 is not being touched or proposed to be amended, so that would remain the same. The proposal, as I mentioned, is to raise the height limit to 75 feet for a light industrial zoning district. This increase of height, in staff's opinion, will allow for better utilization of those existing industrial zoning districts. This is supported by recent comp plan efforts, as the board is well aware of, to direct and encourage industrial inquiries into the areas that are zoned already for industrial. County currently, and this is one consideration that staff looked into a little bit, as well as the Planning Commission did have questions about, as far as public safety, just as a way of background, the county currently has one aerial ladder truck that does have a reach up to 105 feet. The effective reach of that is less, once you take into account collapse zones for buildings and whatnot. With that support, and two other area units from Orange and Lake of the Woods, it would be possible to fight a fire of a building of that size or that height currently. Does not mean that we can't, or should not, look into future increase for our own capacity here in Culpeper County, besides that just one aerial unit. As with any zoning matter, public safety should be considered and recognized, as well as our economic development interest, if that increase in building height of 75 were to be approved. We did look at some surrounding localities, and it's a range for light industrial, 45 feet like we have today, all the way up to 100 feet, for example, just nearby in Orange County, in their light industrial zoning. Inside-town limits, light industrial, I did reach out to the town planning director, they can go up to 70 feet, is the way they interpret their ordinance today, so 70 feet, pretty close to what we're looking at with 75 feet for their light industrial. The board, under Virginia Code 2283, 2285, and 2286, has the ability to change the code. And as chairman, to do that, it does require a public hearing with the board tonight, and that has been properly advertised for tonight as well, and happy to entertain any questions.
Mentioned we've had inquiries, what types of businesses have been inquiring?
Mr. Chairman, the supervisor underwood, the main inquiry that has asked for height has been related to the data center industry specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any further questions for staff? Okay. This issue requires a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now, for anyone that would like to come and speak. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dece Campbell, and I live in Stevensburg District. To give you some perspective about 100-foot tall buildings already in Culpeper, they're located at the Cargill Horizon Milling Plant. There are two, or three, or four, or five, I don't know, I didn't count them, but there are old concrete silos that are 120 feet tall, and the shiny metal ones are wider and about 100 feet tall, and they're all brilliantly lit all night long. As Sam has already read about the other counties in their interest of tall buildings, I could read some also. Falk here has categories maximum 45 feet, Green has industrial zones that reach 60 feet, Madison 50, Prince William, heavy industrial is maximum 75, while light industrial reaches about 60. Rappahannock even has a maximum height of 60, while Spotsylvania's 75. Stafford has heavy and light industrial, both are 65 feet tall. Currently, Culpeper's light industrial zone is 45, and tonight's proposal is to consider the maximum height of 75, even though Cloud IQ has sent a letter March 1st to ask our county to go to 100 feet. And in their letter, they stated they're excited to develop their land into a state-of-the-art data center campus. Their letter also mentioned that the campus is below the McDevitt Drive elevation, thus, quote, "softening the magnitude of height increase." And will they then add another 15 feet for the section on 9.2-1, structures permitted above height limit, and fill their rooftops with all sorts of mechanical equipment and whatever? I think we're facing another gold rush issue. It's a very important issue of what the future of Culpeper will look like by an outsider's design. Does Culpeper have FOMO, the fear of missing out? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak on this issue? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and open it up for discussion or a motion.
I move we propose the, or that we approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance as
Second one, ma'am?
Then I withdraw my motion. Mr. Chairman, if we can, the discussion I'd like to have, when we talk about the heavy industrial land that we have now that has a 75-foot building, what structures, Sam, do you know what structures in the county right now? Is that the co-op? And...
The co-op does have some taller structures. They're in the county officially, near town limits there. The town, inside-town limits, you do have some taller structures there, right behind Merchants Grocery. I don't believe there's any other taller structures than the co-op, though, that are in the county currently.
In that question, when it comes to the public safety portion of it, with fighting those fires, I don't know that we've ever had to fight a fire that's 90 feet tall. And speaking with the president of the association, he has indicated that it's going to be a challenge, even at a 90-foot tall building. The distance that they have to pull away from the building, the arch of the water, that it's tough to fight one that's that tall. That said, with the situation that our firing rescues in now, having to buy another ladder truck, or waiting for a response from Lake of the Woods, or a county that has the other ladder trucks, I think presents a real problem when it comes to public safety with buildings that tall. If it were a 60-foot building, with the 15-foot added mechanicals on top, with a total height of 75 feet, I would be more at ease to support something like that. And again, with the heavy industrial land that we have, we really don't have a data center that's full of electrical servers that could very well have an issue. We've already experienced that with the one data center we've got on 29. So I do have reservations about approving a 75-foot tall building. I would be more inclined to say go with a 60-foot building, but I don't know that that would serve from 45 to 60, that's what, another two stories, is that, if I'm calculating that correctly, roughly, but neither here nor there. I think the bottom line is, the public safety portion of it, having an overall height of 75 feet, I would feel more comfortable with that.
And in addition to those comments, and I totally agree with that, but the other thing that we fear is any of these smaller light industrial zoned districts that are out in the middle of our ag zoning. Is there a way that we can limit this stuff, or have something that indicates some type of sight line, or anything like that, that kind of almost dictates that they stay closer to town, near-town environments, or even just for our technology zones, do a zoning overlay that's similar to our tax overlay, something of that nature, so that we're not having just any light industrial zone property available for that 75-foot?
Mr. Chairman, the supervisor's casino, we could look into that. Typically, it's a lot easier to enforce a zoning district as it relates across the whole spectrum of that zoning district, that's why you have separate zoning districts that have separate regulations. I'd have to look into an overlay zone issue. We have overlay zones, they can come with their own standards. You know, we have the entrance corridor overlay district, for example, is a zoning district that has some architectural standards. We have the airport overlay, which has some height restrictions. So there are some overlays that we do use, and you can go that direction. My argument would be is, I really don't know that we have a lot of industrial spread out about the county. What we do have, for example, the Amazon rezoning on Route 3, that's proffered at 45 feet, so they would have to come back specifically to the board to amend that height. So this zoning district amendment, if the board were to approve it, 60 or 75 wouldn't apply to them. And that's probably the biggest that I can think of. Right there in Stevensburg, where we do actually now think about, have another high structure with asphalt milling plant there of Luckstone, they probably could enjoy that if they were to ever expand, because they're an existing industrial user. But there again, it's been a use that's been established for a number of years. I don't know that we have a lot of smaller parcels, in other words, that are undeveloped
Could also create another zoning district. So, I mean, I don't know why you couldn't have light industrial one and light industrial two, or light, medium, and heavy, whatever you wanted to call it, and have it, if there are areas that you would be more comfortable with this, such as McDevitt Drive, then perhaps we create medium industrial, make that medium, and do the 75 and 15, if that would allay your concerns.
Well, that still doesn't alleviate, I appreciate the idea of a different zoning district, but that still doesn't take care of the safety portion of it with having the equipment to fight a building with mechanicals that is 90-foot tall. We talk about the heavy industrial that's on Route 3 with the quarry, I don't know that we have a whole lot of heavy industrial that's undeveloped right now throughout. Most of what we're talking about in our technology zone applies to the light industrial areas. So, again, I just, it's hard enough now to, you know, getting the revenues to keep our equipment updated without having to expand, and keep in mind, that would more than likely be company one that would be first due in that area, and we're faced with a situation where they've outgrown that building as it stands now. So I think what we're doing by increasing this height to 90 feet with mechanicals, that we're opening up a whole lot of unforeseen issues that's going to pop up pretty quickly.
As a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, relative to the discussion this morning, and fire, the fire companies, we will maybe create a lot of undue pressure on some other companies to be able to come up with equipment in their first due areas, so I think it certainly bears looking at, and I appreciate your comments.
My suspicion is that issue would resolve, meaning that when you look at the, one, the businesses that would go there want to have adequate insurance protection, which wants things to be adequately safe, and so they would have tremendous incentives to ensure that there were EMS equipment capable of handling what they needed for their insurance. So, the way things work, I'm confident if we made the change, we would not be creating an additional safety hazard. And when I look at the other counties that have it, or the town that has a higher height limit, I don't believe that they're being irresponsible. That's in the minority, so let's keep going.
So we will move on to case number U-2238-23-1. Milestone Towers requesting a conditional use permit to construct and operate 150-foot tall telecommunications tower. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Neil and Sam. I'll go ahead and turn this over to Neil and Sam, let them address this issue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll read the letter from the planning commission, if you will. The Board of Supervisors will consider a request by Milestone Towers, care of Jonathan Yates, for a conditional use permit to construct and operate 150-foot tall telecommunications tower, monopole, with a two-foot lightning rod in accordance with Article 17-6 of the zoning ordinance. The property is located off of Achievement Drive on the Culpeper County School property in the Catalpa Magisterial District, it's found on Tax Map 4154B. The Board of Supervisors will affirm or reverse findings made by the planning commission as to whether the general location, or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed telecommunications tower is substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan, or part thereof, in accordance with Virginia State Code 1950 as amended, Section 15-22232. The board is also responsible for making a determination as to approval or disapproval of the conditional use permit. This case was considered by the planning commission after proper advertising and public hearing held on Wednesday, April 12th, 2023. The facilities of the public utilities and public service corporations, including wireless telecommunication uses, are subject to review by the planning commission under the Code of Virginia 1522232, excuse me. In the aforementioned case, the applicant's telecommunications tower proposal is not a feature presently shown on the county's comprehensive plan. Given such, after inviting public comment, the planning commission, upon motion duly carried, made determination by an eight-zero vote, that the subject proposal's general plan or approximate location, character, and extent are substantially in accord with the county's comprehensive plan. Furthermore, the planning commission found the request to be in conformance with Article 17-6, standards for telecommunications antennas and towers of the zoning ordinance. And upon motion duly carried, the planning commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors, by eight-zero vote, the proposed use permit be approved with the following conditions, and there are two. Number one, telecommunications structure shall not be lighted, nor surfaced with any signage or advertisement. And number two, the applicant shall conform, excuse me, the applicant shall confirm the proposed lease area prior to site plan approval. The lease area shall include necessary tower infrastructure, as well as required fencing, landscaping, and access easements. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr., Chairman, Plan Commission.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on the screen highlights the location of the proposed tower by milestone. And you see there, the red star is the approximate tower location, which is behind Culpeper County High School, Culpeper Middle School there. They have worked with the Culpeper County School Board on a potential lease to construct and erect this tower of 150 feet. Right now, it's proposed before AT&amp;T specifically, there would be, be room on the tower for other carriers, as required by our code, and, and is allowed by this proposed application. There are other structures nearby, they have, that are telecommunications. The applicant did reach out to those carriers, and this is, they do not suit their needs, they do not fit the need that this location will, as far as coverage area. Article 17, as Neil mentioned, the planning commission considers Article 17-6 specifically points out various application requirements. The applicant, in staff's opinion, and the planning commission's opinion, has fully complied with those and submitted those. The planning commission did have a finding separately for the comprehensive plan, as is required by the Code of Virginia. They did find it substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. The 2023 comp plan addresses wireless communication as a desire to move the county and improve service, which is stated in Chapter 7, goal number two specifically there. We also have more language in that specific session that calls about facilities that do not negatively impact the county's rural areas. This area being located behind two well-established schools, pretty close to town limits, and some other commercial area, in staff's opinion, is not located in a rural area, and has been rather developed quite intensely over the past many years. It is located within the urban services boundary, where we do expect continued growth, as related to the existing infrastructure that's there for other types of development. This applicant does provide for co-location opportunities as well, and they will do some screening along the base of the property, or the base of the project, to screen any compound area, fencing area. The applicant, as I mentioned, did provide sufficient evidence, and for our staff, the, the county code also requires a third-party review. CTA consultants out of Lynchburg, a contractual third-party technical reviewer, did review the application under, under our code, performed a full evaluation of the submittal, and did, are recommending approval of the, of the tower as well, with a couple of conditions, and those were mentioned by Mr. Drumholler and by the planning commission's letter. The applicant did conduct some balloon tests to determine various visibility from the surrounding site. The balloon test results specifically were included in their, what I would call photo simulations, which was part of their package. You can see throughout their submission, various sites, primarily to the south, it's not extremely visible. It will be visible from the north, from the North Ridge area, the top of the tower could be seen if you look towards the, the west, south, south and west. Mr. Chairman, the staff does recommend and supports the planning commission's finding, and is recommending approval, and does find the, the proposed application to be in substantial accord with our goals that are found in the comprehensive plan as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Yates and Representative for Milestone are here tonight, that can answer questions, and I believe they may want to make a brief presentation to the board as well.
Yes, sir, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Jonathan Yates. I have with me my radio frequency engineer, Mr. Andrew Peterson. First and foremost, we're here to answer any, all questions, but one thing I want to stress. Did I? Don't let me break it. One thing we wanted to stress, and I brought this up to planning commission, is how much we appreciate the two gentlemen to my left. I asked 101 stupid questions during the process, they never laughed at me, and they were great people to work with to get to this point. Sam and Neil have done an incredible job of presenting it to you. This is a, as cell towers go, a very shorter facility, 150-foot, what we call the monopole design. And it's designed initially for AT&amp;T, also AT&amp;T will be deploying their first net, their first responder network authority. But in addition, we've designed it for at least four additional broadband carriers. We also are very happy, very pleased with our partnership with the school board. This is the location exactly where AT&amp;T needed to be, and we feel we've found a perfect location. And we also feel, after working with staff, that we've met the requirements of 17-6. I'm here for any, all questions about the site placement, or what the, you know, site going forward. But just to give you a feel for it, if we are approved, and we'll find out after a while, if we are approved, it's about a 45 to 60-day construction period. After that, AT&amp;T usually only visits the site less than monthly, maybe about 10 times a year for a little routine maintenance. And this facility does not put off any noise, odor, lights, vibration, fumes of glare. What it does do is it provides effective wireless infrastructure to that area, not only for voice, broadband, and also for first, first responder network authority. So a very important facility for that part of the county, to bring coverage where it should be. And we feel you'll be the ultimate arbiter. We feel that we have a good location and a good facility for that location. We feel that we fit the context. I'm here for any questions. If they're of a technical nature, about the radio frequency of design and those kind of things, Mr. Peterson will jump in for those.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I don't know if it's a question, but it would be a clarification for staff. I have received some calls concerning the advertisement that was done, and I've gotten a better understanding of that this afternoon. But for the record, on the clarification of the case map, if you would look, the way the red line is drawn out around the complex for the high school and middle school, there seems to be a portion that was off to the upper right-hand corner that was left out. And just to be clear, that when, when this is done by the GIS drawing, they follow the boundary line of that particular tax map parcel. And unbeknownst to me, I didn't realize this, but the, the high school actually has two parcels there, and that upper right-hand corner is a separate tax map parcel, is that correct?
Yes, Supervisor Bates, that, that's why that parcel's not highlighted, because we do parcel-specific use permit applications. So that larger parcel there, that red line that's curving right into the middle school, that does exist. It is a parcel line today. The school does own both parcels. And the adjacent notices were not impacted by that. North Ridge Apartment Complex was notified under normal protocol, and then everybody else surrounding that was too, so.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, so this issue requires a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, for anyone that would like to come and speak on this issue. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, open it back up for a discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the Milestone Towers in accordance with Article 17-6, standards for telecommunications of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just make one comment, if this is an AT&amp;T tower, I hope you're looking in other areas of the county where you can get better service, because right there, I have no problem, but in other areas, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I believe staff has a question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to make sure that we have prepared a resolution that has been posted on board docs, but just want to make sure that those conditions, as recommended by the planning commission, were part of that motion, and if you would, you could even refer to that, that resolution that's been prepared.
Do we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'll amend the, amend the motion, amend the motion to approve case number U-2238-23-1, approve the application and the resolution for the tower on Tax Map Parcel 41-54.
Okay, Ms. Gugino, you second it?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, we adjourn.